We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting order. And for tonight's indication, we have Pastor Carlos Campos of the Calvary Baptist Church.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you, Lord, for today. Thank you for giving us another day, Father, just to love you, Father, to show others your love. Lord, I pray and thank you for the city of Taylorville. Father, just pray for everything that is going on. Lord, I pray for the officers. I pray for the fire department. Lord, bless them and keep them safe for their sacrifice and everything that they do. Lord, I also pray for Mayor Rutherford and the officers here tonight. Pray for them and their families. Father, bless them and put a hedge of protection around them. And, Lord, I just pray for tonight, just give these men wisdom and knowledge in everything that they do. And, Father, just help us to glorify you with all our actions, Father. We love you in your son's precious name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Do you join me in the Fledge of Allegiance?
I conglatulate to the United States of America. In the Republic where which stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Shawn Burtle.
Here.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Here.
Rob Heberling.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coontz.
Here.
John Lawrence.
Here.
Martin Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Here.
All Aldermen present. First thing we have, Conlegians, a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings in the public hearing list on tonight's agenda. Alderman Dorchinez. Alderman Jones. Discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Motion passes. Okay, those minutes will be approved. It will be the minutes of the public hearing held November 5th, 2012. Minutes of the regular meeting held November 5th, 2012. Minutes of the Lake Airport Committee held November 8th, 2012. Minutes of the Water and Environmental Committee meeting held November 8th, 2012. Now, that one, we made a minor amendment. Alderman voted, showed me a little mistake made there, and we'll take care of correcting that. It's very minor. Minutes of the Ordinance Committee meeting held November 15th, 2012. And minutes of the Finance Committee meeting held November 15th, 2012. And then, in a motion to approve those. Alderman Burtle. Ernie Second.
Agreed.
Second Alderman Lawrence. Discussion or comment? Hearing none, roll call.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, moving on to discussions and remotions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee in Holomart to follow into motions, ordinances, or resolutions. First thing we need to do is have a new officer to swear in, give the oath of office. This is a woman, my former secretary, Cindy Brown, and she's now taken over as the Human Resource Manager. And so I'd ask Pam Peabody, your city clerk, to please do the honors. We point out that my loss is the city's gain.
You saw this where it was for the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will quickly discharge the duties of Human Resource Manager to which you were appointed according to the best of your ability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Just one question. What can Brown do for you? I will say she was tested this afternoon. She sat on a meeting that if she had any sense, she probably would've got up and ran out on it. She stayed in there, so. Okay, next, we have the Plan Commission. Mr. Hauser, would you please address the council?
Thank you, Your Honor. Lord of Aldermen, the Planning and Zoning Commission met this evening downstairs in the basement expecting a large crowd, I think, to discuss the possibly occurred, the site development plan for a company called Pro Shot Products located at 311 Baum and Road. The, there were a variety of questions that were asked by some of you who were there and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and a few statements made by the engineer on the property, as well as our own city engineer, Mr. Green, and everything seemed to work out in order. The company did ask, in addition to approval of the plans, the site plan, for two variants, one of them being, considering that there are largely warehouse space, and there's a basic one-size-fits-all formula for computing the number of parking spaces that would be allotted for 20,400 square feet of space, they don't, you don't have close to 68 employees or people coming to the business, not 18, and they asked for us to downsize that approval to 18. There are no, it's very rural there, and there are no sidewalks anyplace, and they did ask for a variance requiring that sidewalk be constructed in front of their property. It would be the only one. And after a whole lot of discussion, a motion was made to recommend to you, the city council, approval of the site plan as it was presented, and including the two variants request.
I'll make a motion and we accept the Planning Commission's recommendation. Second by Alderman Jones. Second by Alderman Walters. Additional comments?
I just got a comment.
Alderman Burtle?
I made this comment downstairs. Mr. Damrick's, Damrick's business is fairly large for Taylorville, and I don't think it's very well-known. If anybody's an avid gun lover like I am, any place that you go that sells guns or gun-oriented products, this gentleman's products are there. I mean, just about anywhere. And the fact that he said he's in 43 countries now is pretty substantial that he can operate out of town this size and do that kind of business. So I congratulate you on that, and I think this plan is fantastic for Taylorville.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes. Motion passes eight to zero. All right, let's move on. The next item, actually, is the property at 26 Alinai Drive. We had advertised the possibility of an auction, to auction off that lot, but I'm not sure we have anyone here to do that. Again, reference to the property at 26 Alinai Drive. Is anyone interested in making a bid for that property that's here tonight? I don't see anyone. So, with that said, then we also, there's no need to do the resolution that follows regarding the real estate purchase agreement for that property, so we'll skip that one, too. Alderman Walters?
I think it's imperative that we continue to look through the statutes or through our city attorney. We need to find some way to resolve the issue and get this property into the hands of some citizens or a contractor or somebody, so that the city of Taylorville does not have to maintain it. I know that there's certain things in the statutes, in the statutes, that we're supposed to adhere to, but I think that we need to try to find some other way to resolve this issue and enter that piece of property.
I agree. We've been trying. All right, let's go to the resolution regarding the Shelby Electric Cooperative right-of-way easement.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, can I get a second on that?
Yes.
Alderman Voda, discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes. That motion passes eight to zero.
Well, Your Honor, there was nothing else you came before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the agenda this evening, and that being said, we adjourned.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. The next item, actually, is the property at 26 Alinai Drive. We had advertised the possibility of an auction, to auction off that lot, but I'm not sure we have anyone here to do that. Again, reference to the property at 26 Alinai Drive. Is anyone interested in making a bid for that property that's here tonight? I don't see anyone. So, with that said, then we also, there's no need to do the resolution that follows regarding the real estate purchase agreement for that property, so we'll skip that one, too. Alderman Walters?
I think it's imperative that we continue to look through the statutes or through our city attorney. We need to find some way to resolve the issue and get this property into the hands of some citizens or a contractor or somebody, so that the city of Taylorville does not have to maintain it. I know that there's certain things in the statutes, in the statutes, that we're supposed to adhere to, but I think that we need to try to find some other way to resolve this issue and enter that piece of property.
I agree. We've been trying. All right, let's go to the resolution regarding the Shelby Electric Cooperative right-of-way easement.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, can I get a second on that?
Yes.
Alderman Voda, discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes. That motion passes eight to zero. Next, we have an ordinance vacating Rick Street. That's south of Gandy Streets.
I'll make that motion and speak to the issue, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, can I get a second?
Second.
Alderman Burtle, go ahead, Alderman Walters.
This is another small piece of the puzzle down there for our very well-kept cemetery in the city of Taylorville. We're trying to obtain additional ground there for future burials, and this just more or less takes care of a little small portion of Rick Street that's not used for any other purposes that will be utilized by the cemetery.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes. That motion passes eight to zero. Next, we have an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter One, Section 12 of the City of Taylorville City Code, addressing changes for services inside or outside the city or fire protection district. Alderman Burtle. Second by Alderman Heberling. Discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Shawn Burtle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes. That motion passes eight to zero. Next, we have a motion to approve a payment in the amount of $1,250 to Aviation Insurance Managers Incorporated for additional insurance.
Your Honor, I'll take that from the Lake and Airport Committee and make that motion.
I'll second that, Your Honor, with a comment.
Second by Alderman Walters, go ahead with your comment.
This, Your Honor, as well as my fellow Aldermen, this is something I've been asking for, for a number of years, as most of you are aware, they've been around, I thought that $300,000 recovery was almost nonexistent this day and age, and we needed to go to that $1 million. So I appreciate the efforts of the committee to go ahead and get that done.
Go ahead and if I can, Your Honor.
Alderman Voda?
Yes, that is, that is a, the motion is going to be forthcoming, in the reading of the minutes, or the motion's out of the minutes. This is actually an additional charge for insurance related to a, I'm looking for the word, but anyway, it's an exemption from what we have now. The $1,250, that is existing right, that is going to be purchased here. This, this insurance is a, what is the word I'm looking for, Mr. Newberry?
Exclusion.
Okay, so, right now, we have the exclusion, and this is going to release, to be covered, all related to the fact that the parachute club does operate out of our airport. With that said, the, currently, and the mayor and I have talked, Mr. Newberry and I have talked, we are currently in discussions with the parachute club to address some sort of a reimbursement for the additional expenses incurred due to their fact that they are operating out of the airport, and that is why we're adding this additional insurance. So, we are in discussions with those to rectify some of the costs associated with this.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
John Burtle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes. Motion passes eight to zero. Bring us the city attorney updates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have very little this evening. Joe Green got away from me here before I could discuss the Kim Morton matter. You know, that's the sanitary sewer that's going from Walmart to Route 48. Alderman Walters, in any event, we need to get back on top of that, and I spoke with Kim Morton's land, uh, farm tenant this, this past week, and he was inquiring about it, so I'll get in touch with Joe Green and get that off the ground. Tomorrow, I told Alderman Dorchinez, I'm meeting with the, the Kirby Brother Brothers, father and son, rather, and they have had all the documents that we've prepared, that I prepared, for annexation of those properties on Baughman slash Preston, and they have some verbiage they want to work out with me, so I'll be meeting with them tomorrow at 2:30, and we'll hopefully have that, that nailed down and ready to go. The other thing, again, annexation, the North Cheney annexations, I think that we're down to, everybody's on board, I think, in speaking with Clerk Peabody, with the exception of one person, I spoke with that person's attorney today, and he is supposed to give me a proposal, I assume, here within the next day or two. So, unless anybody has any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for the city attorney? Alderman Lawrence?
On the Kim Morton property, is that the last easement we need for the east-west shore?
No, I don't think so. Is that right, Alderman Walters? There's some loose ends with one other party, but it's, that's one of the major ones that we're working on, is the Kim Morton, to get that done. Well, we already have an easement.
And we have.
But we revised the easement.
That's a revised.
In order to, because the Babs property, they would not cooperate with the city. So, I didn't know, I thought there was at least one more parcel to the, what would be the?
East.
East.
Yeah. And there possibly could be also, we're working with Superintendent Spiegel to lay out exactly where the water line is there, so we'll know what we're doing as far as with the sewer.
We need to nail down Kim Morton's, though, for several different reasons, and she got back in touch with me early on when we basically sent her the, the new plat where it's really in her favor, and to be quite honest with you, because, I don't want to get, I don't want to bore anybody, but anyway, it's really in her, her favor because it narrows the amount of property that is between the creek and, and the boundary line, which is a good thing for her. So I, I don't think that's the issue, but now I think that with the corn prices and bean prices rising, I think that there are going to be some monetary issues that will also be addressed, that, and rightly so, given the fact that we haven't done anything on that.
Right.
For quite some time.
Mr. Mayor? Alderman Heberling?
I want to back up a little bit and talk about the annexations on the North Cheney properties. You, you say that you are in negotiations with one property owner? What, what would be that point that you guys was negotiating?
I have not negotiated with any of these people.
There was one property.
All these people have voluntarily gone to the clerk's office, I believe, Clerk Peabody, correct me if I'm wrong, I have not had any discussion with any of these people, with the exception that Tom Doyle represents a certain party, and there were all kinds, there were complications, there was a brother in Spain who just got back, I think literally last week, I could be wrong, and I talked to the mayor about that, I said, hey, look, you know, this, the person that resides on this particular piece of property is a, is elderly woman, and we decided, let's wait until the brother gets back, let's discuss with, because there, there's more than one owner to this property, okay? So that's why we, we had to get everybody on board, but, and of course, they're not wanting, they're not wanting this piece of property to come into city of Taylorville, so those are the discussions that are being had.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and.
Discussions more than negotiations.
Yeah, I don't think there, you know, I, I really don't think there are any negotiations, I suppose, maybe that was a long term.
Just seeking clarification.
Well, they don't want to come in, so it's either we negotiate a disposition to bring them in, either immediately or at some later time, which I assume, which I think that's what Mr. Doyle is going to be proposing, and that'll be up to the council on whether or not they want to do that. But I asked him today, a matter of fact, because Clerk Peabody contacted me about that, because the powers that be said that, "We haven't done anything because our attorney is talking to your attorney." Well, I had one conversation with Mr. Doyle, that's probably been three weeks ago, and I didn't really consider, you know, much of a conversation. His, his client doesn't want to come in, and I said, "You have to come in." Now, if there's some timeframe that, that they want to look at because of this lady's age, that's up to the council whether or not they want to take that into consideration. I guess we're getting very close, though. In my opinion.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to mayor updates. I'm happy to say that this Friday, I will be going to the theater here in the city of Taylorville. They're going to open up, and I'm very excited that that's going to open up again. The local owner, the local owner, I think there's actually three that have opened it up, but the local guy is Mike Wiseman, and I want to congratulate him. I think it's a fantastic thing for the city. It really helps, you know, bring life back to the square area there and gives us another outlet for entertainment here that we sorely need, so I'm very happy to see that open up. He's not here tonight, but I do want to thank Fire Department Deputy Chief Mike Cruz, you know, he, he went out east again in response to the damage from Hurricane Sandy out there, and, you know, I'm proud of him for doing that. It's one of those things where, you know, he could drug his feet and, and not gone, I suppose, but we sign these agreements, should anything like that ever happen here, we want help. Well, you know, that's a two-way street, and then when somebody else experiences a disaster like that, it's only prudent or right that we do our part to help them when we can. And Mike went out there, represented Taylorville very well. He's a fantastic professional that we were able to send them. I think it was a learning experience for him, and I'm hoping he can come back and tell us a little bit about his experience out there, so, so maybe sometime soon we'll have Mike stop in and bring us up to speed. I'd also like to congratulate Carol Alexander. She's published a new book here, and maybe read about it in the paper the other day. It's entitled, "The Big Squeal." And no, and it's not a story about Alderman Dorchinez encountering with Ed Huntley. No, it's not that. It's about Liberty the Pig's inspiring personal story, which takes her from a starving piglet to the town mascot, so if you get a chance, you might want to pick up a copy of that and read it. South Elementary School, you may have also seen this in the paper, they're in the, in the middle of a contest right now, and it's kind of like what we did with the solar panels. There's a website there, and if you log on there, you can vote once a day, and they're trying to earn a $50,000 grant that they'll use for smart boards at the school. So I'll just kind of throw that out there, I'll actually put it on tonight's tape, the website's www.powerabrightfuture.com. So if you get a chance, log on there and vote for them once a day if you can. A friendly reminder to all the city officials and the member of the various boards that we have, your open meetings training still needs to be done by the end of December, if you haven't already done that. If you have any questions, please contact Pam Peabody, and she can give you that website again, but it's something that is law now, and everyone's got to go through it and get that certificate, so please do that. And finally, I just want to wish everyone a great Thanksgiving. You know, it appears that more and more of this day is now being used as more of as a kickoff for the holiday season than what it was originally intended for, so please remember the real reason we established the holiday. You know, Lincoln actually established it back in 1863, and he's the one that appointed it a national day of Thanksgiving, but I want everyone to enjoy the great food with your family and thank God for providing you with the opportunity to do that, so. So all I got, unless you guys have any questions? Alderman Voda?
Thank you, Your Honor. The, the link you were talking about on the, for the schools, is that, is that something we can put on the city's web page as a link?
Sure, I think we probably can.
Just a consideration. The other question I had, we received a letter regarding the property on East Main Cross, dated November 6th. Have we heard any feedback on that yet? Mr. Mr. Green, I believe, sent that out?
Yeah, well, he, he did, and that, that came back, it was, I think it may, may have gone to an incorrect address. We then stepped forward and sent it out about Tuesday of last week, and have not heard back from it yet, but we sent it only in regular mail and certified, so we should be hearing something.
Thank you. Your Honor, if you gentlemen will drive by the site, if you haven't been down there the last few days, Superintendent Wiseman and I have been down there, there's a number of piles of dirt that are being put there behind the, the building on the property. So the assumption at this point is that he's going to be using that to put that berm in there for the, for the detention of the water. If you need to drive down and look at it.
Hopefully, that's the case. Any other questions?
You might tell them about the public hearings we have to have coming up.
Oh, yeah, they, we, as part of this electric aggregation, which was passed, you know, during this last election, the referendum to allow us to go ahead and purchase the electricity, we have to have two public hearings. So we'll be having one next Thursday, if I'm correct, next Thursday at six.
Five thirty.
At 5:30, before our committee meetings, and then at the next city council meeting on the third, we'll have one, but we have to have two of those, so that's part of the process. Anything else? We'll move on to committee reports. Discussions and our motions to approve, adopt, and deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee in Holomart the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at committee level. We'll start out with the Lake Airport Committee.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. Four motions came out of the Lake and Airport Committee meeting, a motion to direct the
Are you studying that word? Trying to do the omnibus.
Are you done, children? Thank you. The next motion to come out of there was related to Mr. Walters' comments earlier today. A motion to direct the city clerk to change the hangar leases for the Mid-America Sport Parachute Club to reflect an insurance requirement, and that changed from $300,000 to $1 million coverage, and like place that in the form of a motion.
Okay, you have a second on that?
I'll second that, your honor.
Alderman Walters, additional discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Randy Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coots.
Yes.
Sean Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
The next motion was to direct the city clerk to change the rules and regulations to reflect an insurance requirement change from $300,000 to $1 million coverage also for the Mid-America Sport Parachute Club. I would place that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that one also, your honor. Alderman Walters, additional discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coots.
Yes.
Sean Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Randy Dorchinez.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, and then finally, a motion to accept the June 4th, 2012, and October 8th, 2012 Boyd Dappert Youth Reservation Council meeting minutes, place that in the form of a motion.
Second. Second, Alderman Jones, discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Moving on to Water Environmental Committee.
Thank you, your honor. I would like to make a motion that we approve the omnibus vote designation for the Water Environmental Meeting motions.
Second, your honor. Second, Alderman Walters, discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coots.
Yes.
Sean Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Randy Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, you want to just highlight quickly the, what we'll be approving?
Well, the first one is, the rest of them are mundane, except for the first one. That motion was to waive the tapping fees of $1,900 for Yawn Park in lieu of their installing a fire hydrant. They, they were under the assumption that we were going to forgive these water tapping fees early on. They spent a considerable amount of money installing a fire hydrant out there, which they weren't responsible for doing, but they stepped forward and spent a considerable amount of money to do that. So that's the reason for the $1,900.
Okay. Basically, I was just going to kind of have you read them basically for the record, but I guess technically, when you use them as a vote, you're not supposed to have a whole lot of discussion anyway, so.
Right. Because I understand.
We don't have to read them either. You don't have to read them either, technically.
Okay.
If we could, could I just have Mr. Dorchinez read the last one?
You just want him to say that word?
See, I told you.
Oh, I knew it.
See, that's what we was discussing.
Is that, you were? I'm sorry, I was drawing my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion.
I thought I, I thought I told you before that I'm the one that makes the jokes. I'm not the butt of the joke.
He could have read it quicker.
That motion was to accept a little bit of .483 per pound for hydrofluocyanic acid, hydrofluocyanic acid.
Thank you very much.
From Hawkins County.
Now, would you like to make a motion to accept all those?
I'd like to make a motion to accept all those motions.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Walters, discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Ray Coots.
Yes.
Sean Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Randy Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Brings us to Finance Committee.
Thank you, your honor. Under the, coming out of the Finance Committee, we've got two motions, the first of which is a recommendation to the city council, approve the January 1st, 2013 to January 1st, 2014 workman's compensation, policy, insurance renewal premium of $285,466 even, and purchase from the Illinois Public Risk Fund. I'll make that motion with a comment.
Okay, second, Alderman Bertle, go ahead with your comment. Alderman Lawrence.
Workman's compensation premium is basically insurance on employee injuries, which you probably all know. This year's premium is $15,553 less than last year's, and it's been calculated, as it has been in the past, on a five-year average of the claims process. Last year, claims were probably, as I recall, they were 2% of the premium, and averaging out that created a $15,553 decrease. And coupled with that, I guess we've got a charge to our new human relations officer that she's got a targeted better year coming up. I don't know whether she can throw away the claims or hide them or draw or something.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Sean Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Randy Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coots.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
The next motion is our annual truth in taxation ordinance, and the motion reads, I make the motion to direct the city clerk's office to prepare an ordinance that pursuant to the Truth in Taxation Act, the sum of $2,430,846 for the city's current fiscal year, May 1 of 2012 to April 30 of 2013, upon a taxable property in the city, which amount is less than 105% of the amount extended or estimated to be extended upon the final aggregate levy of the preceding fiscal year, and a truth in taxation public hearing is therefore not required. This includes a total maximum levy of $233,766 for the Taylorville Public Library. I'll make that motion with a comment.
Okay, get a second. Second, Alderman Bertle, go ahead with your comment. Alderman Lawrence.
I freely said this is our annual routine ordinance on the tax levy. We have to keep within that 5% increase, and our treasurer, France, assures us that she has massaged all the individual levies, and she's within 98 cents of having met that 5% increase.
Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Randy Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coots.
Yes.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Brings us our last motion, a motion to approve and ratify payment of bills in the amount of $170,661.73.
I'll make that motion, your honor, with a comment.
Okay, get a second.
I'll second, your honor.
Second, Alderman Walters, go ahead with your comment. Alderman Lawrence.
The total, as in the agenda, for this payday being the third, or the second meeting of the council is this month, total $170,661.73. As usual, I've itemized some of the bigger ticket items under insurance. We've got an Aflac employees medical, which normally is paid the first meeting, $4,982.93, and then also, we have the $1,250 premium for the airport aviation that we approved earlier. Under utilities, we always get hit the second meeting of the month with our direct energy bill, which was $7,639, and the Ameren and rural electric delivery charges, that amount at $8,490, so roughly a total of $16,000 for the utilities this month. Had a big month on our contract with fuel with CCFS, $24,395 in diesel and unleaded gasoline for all the city departments. That $24,000 compares with an average over the last five months of about $25,300, so right on target, although I think compared to prior year at this time, our diesel and gas both are running several dollars higher. Got a big stack of Green and Bradford Engineering bills. This is for their October work. Motually on the sewer project funds, contracts in progress, although there was a $7,000 spillway dam engineering study being paid. Total for the Green and Bradford is $28,790, and then along with that, engineering, we bought $10,623 in CA6 stone mix that's being used on the Waco and Elevator Shreets sewer project. Couple of other large items, we're paying for our April 30 audit, Live with Mathias and Hooper, $22,100, got a repair bill on, or no, we got a generator for well number three at the water department, $3,765, and buying a couple of camera systems for the police department for $3,590. Those total $115,625 out of the 170, which leaves roughly $55,000 of the usual budgeted hours.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Randy Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coots.
Yes.
Sean Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, per Public Act 96-1473, this portion of the city council meeting is reserved for any city resident wishing to address the council on issues that are relevant to the council. Would anyone out there like to address the council? Mr. Brown? All right, hearing none.
Motion to adjourn. I see the profession as in the mind of all the ultimate pros yourself, and I say that sincerely. It's a pleasure to let you join the city.
Well, Mr. Dorchinez has worked hard with us and tried to keep us in line, so. Okay, got a motion for Alderman Jones. Need a second? Adjourn.
Second, adjourned.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes, meeting adjourned 7:38 PM.